Hey everyone, I'm going to start this meeting a little early because we have a PowerPoint presentation. I have Leslie Carrison here from Northern Forest Center to talk to us about a project to provide initiatives of up to $15,000 for the installation of wood pellet boilers in municipal buildings. The goal of the project is energy efficiency and cost savings. So Leslie, I'm going to give you the floor now. And I'm going to get out of the way.
Thank you very much.
Come right up here. Okay.
Well, this is good enough. I will pass you down to the room. There are, does it hand that up program we're going to talk about? There are the happy children, they're going to be talking about, uh, talking about annual reports and all this stuff. Anyone who needs to learn more about it, they can have their mind card. So, um, so, it's organized. If you don't mind, I'll just pass all the stack around and you can take what you like. Definitely take my card though, please. That works, okay. This is fancier than my normal tech setup. So, um, thanks very much for having me. I'm Leslie Carrison, as Ruby said, with the Northern Forest Center, which is based in New Hampshire, but I live just outside Essex County, in Franklin County, in Saranac Lake. And, um, I have really two goals in sharing information about this program with you today. One is to make you aware that your municipalities are eligible to apply to this program for municipal buildings. And I'll tell you more about what that, what that means and what it entails. But any municipality in Essex County is eligible to apply. And we would love to get some more municipal applications to the program. The other reason for, we wanted to share information about the program with you is that Essex County was actually the lead entity applying for the grant that's making this program possible through the Cleaner Greener Communities Program at NYSERDA and the grant that ANCA, the Adirondack North Country Association amalgamated. And, uh, so I want to thank you on behalf of the county, as representatives of the county, for your support of the overall grant application. So Ruby's asked me to be quick and I will try to be quick. Just a super little bit of background on the Northern Forest Center. You can read more in the annual reports that are going around, but basically the Northern Forest Center works across the four state northern forest region from New York over to Maine, trying to develop healthy communities, healthy thriving communities that interrelate and benefit from healthy forests. And one of the programs, and the one I'll be talking about, is based on utilizing our forest resources for heat. So in the Adirondack North Country region, our residents and communities spend $200 million on fuel, oil, and other heating sources that we pay to heat our buildings and homes. And $160 million of that leaves our economy, our regional economy, and does not stay and recirculate in our regional economy. So the question is, given, you know, this large resource that we have in the form of our forests, can we bring those costs down? Can we lower the amount of money that we spend on heating oil? And can we increase the proportion of the dollars that we spend on heat that recirculate in our local economy? And that's really the core challenge that the Northern Forest Center's been kind of tackling. Many of us, when we think of wood heat, we think of things, systems that are both inefficient from a time perspective, labor intensive to haul cordwood or haul bags of pellets, or inefficient from an environmental perspective in terms of spewing out high levels of emissions. But there are modern wood heating solutions that really upend that, that make the systems efficient both on a time basis and also in terms of clean burning systems that aren't so wasteful and, you know, highly polluting. These systems can be fully integrated in replacing the central heating system of a building. So what this diagram is showing, and the reason I really wanted to kind of bore you with PowerPoint, is just to show you this graphic so that you get a sense of what's possible with these systems. Because I know we all have preconceived notions that, oh, a pellet stove is this little thing that lives in the corner and you dump bags into it periodically. This is not that. What we're proposing is not that. It's a fully integrated heating source for an entire building that swaps out an existing oil or propane boiler and replaces it with an integrated pellet boiler. And so the way the system works is that you get, I'm going to step over here and point. This is showing a delivery truck, a pellet delivery truck, that's making a bulk pellet delivery, similar to what an oil or propane delivery, how it functions in, you know, your home or your municipal building now, filling up a bulk storage facility. In the case of our program, those will be external to the building, so they'll look like an external shed like this. But in any event, whether it's inside the building or outside the building, the systems will get augured, the pellets will get augured right into the pellet boiler, which, as I said, can swap out an existing oil or propane boiler that, you know, sits in your basement now. That will dump heat into a thermal storage tank. And from that, that can serve us both your domestic hot water needs and your existing heat distribution system, whether it be radiators, or it can also do hot air through a heat exchanger.
Steam.
Hmm?
Steam heat.
I'm sorry?
Steam.
Uh, I believe there's one manufacturer who can do steam. That's a more complicated process and I don't understand it technically that well, but it can be done. This picture just shows another shot of what a bulk pellet delivery truck looks like, hooked up to one of these external bulk pellet sheds. So again, what you don't see here is, you know, your municipal employees hauling 40-pound bags of pellets, or your, you know, 70-year-old aunt hauling 40-pound bags of pellets. So again, these systems have the benefit of being fully automated, servicing bulk facilities, highly efficient from an environmental standpoint, they meet rigorous air quality standards, and they can meet the full heating needs of a building. So the approach that the Northern Forest Center has taken in promoting this technology and trying to get it off the ground is to use a clustered community approach called the Model Neighborhood Program, the Model Neighborhood Wood Heat Initiative. And the center has implemented this approach in New Hampshire, Maine, and Vermont already. And the goal is really, because this is a rather novel technology that many individuals aren't familiar with as customers, many installers aren't familiar with at this time, and also we don't yet have the bulk delivery routes necessarily in place. The idea is to get all of those things happening in a concentrated geographic area. And, um, and to really sort of tip the balance from this being a novel technology to something that is, that has really sort of had the full ecosystem of services necessary in a community to make it work. And the center has been involved in these, primarily in the three other states of the northern forest, in more than 100 wood pellet boiler installations. These installations have measurable economic impacts in terms of money spent saved on fuel costs, dollars that recirculate in the local economy instead of leaving because we're using a local resource and supporting local jobs, and also measurable impacts in terms of tons of greenhouse gas reductions because we're using a more sustainable fuel source. And I can talk a little more about that if you're interested. This is a screenshot from the center's website where this data is tracked on an ongoing basis. So, um, what I really wanted to share with you is the fact that through my work and the grant that I mentioned earlier, the center's bringing this approach to New York. And, um, and we are incentivizing installations here now. We have three different components of the program. We have a residential component, a commercial component, and a municipal component. Our residential component is going to be focused in the environs around Saranac Lake, the town of Tupper Lake, and the town of Saranac in Clinton County. And the commercial will be focused there as well. Our municipal component is more widespread geographically, and as I mentioned, any municipality in Essex County can apply for a municipal building. The way the program works is that it's a very simple application process, as you see the application that I passed around. That's the entrance point into the program. What the program does is it pays for 50% of the installed cost of one of these systems up to a cap of, in the case of municipal systems, $15,000. And, um, and through the program, you would need to meet a variety of requirements along the way, but I would work carefully with, you know, you, municipal staff, to walk you through that process and make sure that, that we were sort of meeting all those requirements along the way. There are five eligible manufactured boilers, and we have a list of 10 eligible installers at the moment, and that list is growing and shrinking, you know, on an ongoing basis as we get new installers who are interested in participating. Basically, installers just need proper training, so we need to make sure there's a little bit of quality assurance on the installer side. See what else I want to say about the program itself. Yeah.
Is that, is this subject to competitive bidding, or do you, if a municipality decides they want to go with this system, are they required to put it out to bid?
We're going to let each municipality make a call on how they handle the bidding process. Does that answer your question?
Well, I mean, I'm trying, is it subject to bacon day, all the wage, prevailing wages and so on? Because if it is, it's not going to take long to hit $15,000. That's one of the issues that we face as municipalities, is the, is that huge cost to do projects?
Yeah.
You can find that out later.
Yeah, well, maybe I'm not understanding the question, I guess.
Any municipality, there's a certain threshold, you have to go to competitive bidding.
Right, right.
So, is the state involved in any of this? In other words, you said you have a list of boiler suppliers and contractors.
Yeah, and that has not been competitively bid out yet, so that's something that each project will need to handle on an individual basis. Does that, does that answer it?
Kinda.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I, um, we have a couple municipalities that are already sort of working through the process that have applied already, one of which has gotten so far as to get a quote. And, um, you know, we're not going to be an intermediary in sort of managing the bidding process, of course. We'll give, we, we, we can provide to make that a little bit easier is the technical requirements that would, could be part of a fairly simple bid package, along with a list of our eligible installers that would be the natural group to send that bid package out to.
Leslie, are there any municipalities that are utilizing wood pellet boilers in northern New York now?
Yeah, the town of Saranac has installed a wood pellet boiler in their town hall. That's, um, what's shown in this picture. Um, so some of you may know Jerry Donini, he has been an advocate for this in the town of Saranac. Um, their installation just took place in 2014, fall 2014, a year ago, basically. So they, they used it all of last heating season, and they'd be a good resource. I know that the town of Westport, who's, where are we? Where's Dan?
He's died. He's died. He's always missing.
So the town of Westport has actually applied to our program, and they're, they have made a field trip up to see the town of Saranac installation.
Is there a wood pellet plant in existence in northern New York now?
Yes. Um, the, uh, the-
Gary's?
Yeah, I'll just come down and show you that plant. Current Renewables is up in Messina. They're the, they're the largest in the region. There's also, um, in Keysville, I believe, the, um, the pellet, um-
SX Box and Pellet.
SX Box and Pellet. I don't believe, I need to, I need to touch base with them and talk to them about whether they have a role in participating in this program from a bulk delivery standpoint. But Current Renewables in Messina is definitely set up. That's 100,000 ton per year operation in terms of their production capacity, and they're in the process of increasing that at the moment. They currently divert something like 98% of their production to bagged pellets, but they want to switch and make that 2% of their bulk pellet delivery. They want to expand that dramatically and serve more customers through, um, through bulk deliveries. While we're talking about pellet supply, I just want to mention that many people have heard stories about, um, bagged pellets being unavailable, especially in sort of crunch winter months. What I've been told repeatedly by particularly the folks at Current Renewables is that once customers switch over to be bulk customers, they won't experience those problems because the supply chain for bagged pellets just has a lot of pinch points in terms of pellets needing to get bagged and needing to get put on trucks and needing to get taken out to retailers. And then obviously retailers need to take delivery and put them out for sale. And that all those sort of constructions on the supply chain will just be a lot easier and simpler with bulk pellets. And, and the factoring will be able to plan for customers' needs. If you say, "I'm going to need 10 tons of pellets this winter," can you plan for that? They'll put you in their, their planning cycle and anticipate that. So just quickly, um, one of the reasons to switch is obviously the economics of fuel sources. Obviously, oil and propane prices bounce around. These two graphs show the differences in oil and propane versus pellets on a BTU basis. And what you see in this, in this graph, the price of pellets is the gray line, and same over here. And what you see is that, you know, in general, oil and propane are both more expensive than pellets on a BTU basis. So there's generally a cost savings. But in addition, you see just a much more stable line and a much less erratic line, which makes budgeting much easier because you've got a much more stable fuel cost. And I think I'll flip very quickly through the other slides, just in the interest of brevity. You know, again, one of the goals of this is to keep dollars recirculating in our local economy and to promote local jobs in the forest resources industry, to sequester carbon in our forests rather than kind of burning it on a one-way track, and to cut down on emissions versus, again, those sort of outdoor wood boilers that you might be familiar with. And I can talk more about pellet production if you're interested, but I think, I think I'll just leave it at that in terms of the bulk or what I wanted to convey to you unless anyone has, has further questions.
We all have the impact and that's our portfolio. Any questions, gentlemen? Anyone have any questions with Leslie regarding?
Curious, I know you probably can't give a normal cost, but is-
Can you get that mic closer? I can't hear.
I know you probably can't predict what the cost would be because of each individual, but is there a number like Saranac, for example, that you could give us? I mean, you paid 50% up to $15,000, but does say Saranac, like, says the code, is it $50,000? Is it $40,000?
Yeah, I actually wasn't involved in the, in the town of Saranac installation myself, and I actually don't know those numbers. It's a, it's a fair question, certainly. What we're telling people in terms of residential installations is that our initial expectation is that quotes for a residential installation will probably come back in the neighborhood of $20,000 to $25,000. Because of the wide range of building types and distribution system types in municipal buildings, it's a much dodgier operation to try to speculate on what we might see. So there is a wide range. One thing I didn't mention earlier is that we can only do relatively small systems. Like, for example, we couldn't do this building. It's too big and it exceeds our heat load threshold. But we can do smaller, you know, smaller buildings. The technical size cap of our program is 340,000 BTUs an hour. And, you know, one, I think the process moving forward for each of you, if you are interested in pursuing this or thinking more about it, is just to, to call me and have a conversation about, you know, we're thinking about X building, how do we figure out if it's a good fit? But, but I would say quickly that, that buildings that would be a good fit for the program would be, that have an oil or propane boiler in place, that have either hot water or, um, or hot air, or possibly steam in place as their existing distribution system. You'd have an aging boiler that you'd want to replace, and so, you know, capture the efficiency of swapping out a somewhat obsolete piece of equipment, or a piece of equipment that was going to fail in the near future. And, um, I guess those are really the key things. And a relatively small building, not, not, not a huge, huge place.
Do they be installed in conjunction with an existing boiler so that, uh, in the summer months, for example, you might burn oil or hot water rather than, so that you can switch over or something?
Yeah, you can, you do have the choice about whether you want to remove your existing system or not. And we would talk more about the technicalities of that in each individual case.
Any other questions?
Well, thanks again for your time, and again, I'd very much encourage you, hopefully you all now have my card, if you have any municipal projects at all in mind that you're thinking of, I'd encourage you to reach out to me and just shoot the breeze with me about whether it's a good fit for the program.
That's impressive. Thank you. The lights can't on, Mark, here's. Thank you, Leslie. Martin, curious, would you like to give us an update on Lakes, or, yeah, Lakes and Lakes?
Good morning.
How are you doing?
Good. I just wanted to let you know what we've been up to. As many of you already know, Lakes and Lakes Passages is a nonprofit organization, and we manage a New York State byway that is from Troy to the Canadian border, but in Essex County, it follows Lake Champlain. And so I wanted to give an update on what we're doing, some of what we're doing in Essex County. We've got some exciting projects. So Lakes and Lakes Passage is a service agency, and we're a contract agency here with Essex County. And, um, our services include, especially the work that I'm doing, technical assistance to museums and to other nonprofits. We really want to give them assistance that would help them stay open and alive, which is always a challenge for small nonprofits and for our museums. So, um, we want to create programs and experiences that would bring people to our small communities. And, you know, these are experiences that we've, we've been working on for, for quite a few years. And so one program in particular is the Heritage Center Strategy. And this strategy is, is, we look at three aspects when, as we work with museums and nonprofits. We look at their organizational management and leadership. We look at their programs, their exhibits, and their events. And we look at volunteers and community outreach and building new leadership in the organization. So part of what we have planned for 2016, we've received some funding from the New York State Council on the Arts to do workshops. And the workshops that we plan to do here in this area, we want to do one that is connected with the Nonprofit Revitalization Act. And this is new, well, relatively new. It's in effect, but it's new legal and accounting and governance responsibilities for nonprofits. And this is something that, again, you know, with the smaller nonprofits, it's harder for them to learn how to, how to follow the new regulations. And so we want to give a workshop connected with that, following those new regulations. The other workshop that's always important for museums is, it's ongoing, it's collections care. And, you know, when museums and historical societies have collections, they're responsible for the long-term care of the material. So it's really about, um, a workshop that would be about managing the collections to keep them available for research purposes and exhibits and creating programs. So some of the other workshops that we would hope to do, we want to check in with the museums and nonprofits and have them weigh in on how they feel about some of these other possible workshops. So one that we've done in the past that always seems, people are always looking for, is sustaining volunteers. And there are some groups that have been doing a great job with their volunteer programs. And so we gathered a lot of information so that we could do kind of a handbook to make available for people to follow and to learn about ways to continue to build their volunteer programs. Other possibilities are succession planning, especially in the museums. We often have older people that, that step aside or leave the organization, and it's a way to plan for changes in leadership. Another possibility is, that's often asked for, is working with the media. And then probably one of the most popular is how to generate income, because the, again, the museums and the small nonprofits are always looking for ways to- And so the student newspaper has stories of the students reporting on what they found as far as new technology. So, you know, these are things that were, these are the connections we're trying to make. Just quickly, we have some really exciting projects that are ongoing right now. We have the Lake Champlain Blue Way Trail, which I think I reported on last time. This is working with the Town of Crown Point to look at the landmarks and the history from a boater paddler's point of view, from the lake. And to see, you know, what history is visible if you're a boater, but also then to make a connection to the communities. So this process, we've been collecting information from the historians and community members for about a year now so that we could put this all together and it's being mapped. And we've added a new segment, a Willsboro segment, working with the Willsboro Community Planning and Development Department because they're doing some great work connected with trails right at the mouth of Boquet. And so what's happening is we can make connections so that people can actually paddle up the river, learn more about the history, and then also have access to all the trail system that's being worked on. With Mariah Central School, their history club has been doing some great projects, learning about their mining heritage. Really great group of kids that are exploring this. They're going to the Iron Center Museum, they're going to the Sherman Free Library, they've gone to the Chamber of Commerce because they have iron mining photos, an exhibit on iron mining photos. So the kids are going to try to put together, mostly what they'll put together, they'll be able to put online, different types of photos and stories and about what they've learned. The Westport Heritage House just received a grant for a building condition survey because they really need to focus on their energy conservation needs, so that's something that will be happening in the next couple of months. Town of Crown Point is looking at a railroad, the trail that follows the historic Crown Point Iron Company Railroad. Lots of history and really interesting history along that trail, so it's something that Crown Point has been working to make happen, and we want to help with the history part. We're working on kiosks in the towns of Elizabeth Town, at the Waylandsburg Range in Essex, and at the Tyconderoga Heritage Museum in Tyconderoga. And also, we're working on some French translations for some exhibits in museums. In, well, Chesterfield's already been working on this for the Underground Railroad Museum. And we're going to be in Elizabeth Town to look at exhibits at the museum there, and then the Willsboro Visitor Center, which reported a really, I think they were reporting like 40% Canadian visitors. So we hope to make it a mobile, something a mobile device can access that would help translate the exhibits. And then also the Waterways of War, the Turning Point of the American Revolution. This is a two-day tour that, it's a mobile tour, and it would tell the story of General Burgoyne's northern campaign on Lake Champlain, beginning in Plattsburgh down to the Battle of Saratoga. But the Essex County destinations include Osable Chasm, Willsboro, Crown Point and Tyconderoga. And the first day of the tour ends in Tyconderoga, which would then encourage people to stay overnight in Tyconderoga before continuing for the second day down to Saratoga. Then the last thing I wanted to mention is, over the past year, the Essex County Planning Department has been coordinating the Champlain Valley Heritage Network. And this has been a really great thing because we, a very diverse group of people have come together and found the ways that they have common interests and goals and projects. And we're seeing ways that we can collaborate and put together these projects to make them stronger and more interesting and even more successful. So that's been a great thing. So I just wanted to thank the planning office for being part of that with us. So that's my report.
Thank you, Margaret. Do we have any questions? Anyone who wanted to regard any of their towns? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Carol?
Thank you all. I have a copy of the South Member IDA report.
Good morning. You submitted our report. I don't, anybody have any questions?
The only things I wanted to ask you about was the status of that North Country Community College LOES facility. And our involvement, where it's going, where it was installed and so forth.
Sure. It's ran into a number of unforeseen issues, obstacles. The money was there to secure consultants who would do a feasibility study, and my understanding is that the SUNY accounting structure is a very complex structure and it takes individuals with experiences in that. And we are obviously working very closely with North Country Community College as the lead in this, as they have obviously the background in that type of expertise. Empire State Development has been wonderful. We've probably gone on, I think right now we're on our third budget revision that was just submitted from North Country Community College to Empire State Development last week. The president of North Country had responded to some additional questions from Empire State Development. And my understanding is that that budget and the explanation for the reduction is now gone back to ESD's Board of Directors, and I anticipate hearing something, I'm assuming at their next board meeting, which I'm not sure what the schedule is, but hopefully before the end of the year. I anticipate this to move forward, hopefully soon after that. Of course, once Empire State Development approves the budget reduction, then of course it will come back to the IDA Board for final approval.
I noticed that the IDA is on the North Country Community College Business Development Advisory Board. And so you're saying that they've had three budget reductions?
For the LOES feasibility study.
And why is that the case?
Because what happens is that through their RFP process, they could not identify, they did not get responses for various parts of the RFP, so they kept having huge holes in what was required for the feasibility study. So it could not move forward. And there's also, they were able to fulfill the MWBE requirement, which the state approved, but there was this huge gap where, again, the accounting through the SUNY and CUNY system was very complex and they could not find consultants who would respond to that. They have recently just identified that resource. And again, the final caveat was that ESD wanted a full explanation in the reduction of the budget. So it's back in ESD for their board approval.
It just seems like it's been going on forever and ever.
I agree.
Ever and ever.
I agree with you. We just had this conversation, Jerry wants to contribute at the IDA Board meeting.
We only can do what we can do.
The North Country Community...
I have actual, so it just is frustrating for us.
Is the delay on a state level, or is it just the lack of...
It's not the state. And from my understanding, it's not necessarily even North Country Community College. Again, it's the inability to find this particular consultant who has this background in the accounting system through...
Why would they write an RFP? It seems to me that that's a state issue. That's like...
I would like to get a hold of the colleges.
Yeah, okay. All right. Well, that's the answer I wanted to hear. Thank you.
You got it.
All right. Anything else for, yes, Georgie?
Can you tell me what the status of the WD lot is for the store burn?
The IDA loan has been paid in full, if that's what you're asking us.
So she owns a lot?
Last we knew, a few months ago, that was the case. I don't know if it's currently changed, but the IDA loan has been paid in full.
Okay, you're square with her.
Yes, we are.
Thank you.
Thank you for your help as well.
Any questions, Tommy, regarding Mariah? Any other questions for Carol?
Thanks, Carol.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Good morning. I don't have a formal report today, but I do want to let you guys know that last week, well, a few years back, you guys asked me to audition New York State Historic Preservation Office on the potential of getting this facility put on the Historic Registry. The thought process at the time was that we had a historic property, which is absolutely beautiful, but we take on all the liability of that building without being able to reap any of the benefits that state and federal funding could provide if we were on the registry. So to make a long story short, the nomination process has been completed. The state is going to bring it for review on December 3rd of this year. If there are any rejections to that or comments that the board or the public would like to make in regards to that, they would have to do that by December 2nd. I did send the entire board the letter that we received, so I just wanted to give you a quick update on that and be available to answer any questions, should you have them.
Any questions? This for this building?
This building, yeah.
George's seat should be in the Historical Registry.
It meets the qualification, I think, really. That's all I have today.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions on the youth bureau? I think we have made some progress, hopefully, with the stack out. See. We have the lifeguards and so forth. Every time I see him now, he says he's working on it. We'll see how much he's working on it.
Yeah, I think he is. He's called me to get some more information so that he can pass that along. So I think he is doing that.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Come on down.
Good morning.
Good morning.
You should all have my full report in your packets, I just want to know a couple of things. First, we had our Historians' Meeting and Conservation Workshop last month, and we thought it went very well. The meeting was attended by more than 20 local historians, and so it was our final event of the 2015 season. We do plan to make this an annual meeting. As always, the Brewster Memorial Library will remain open through the winter for individuals who want to research Essex County history. As for our winter projects, renovation has begun on a room that will be the new art gallery. We plan to have changing art shows, including historic art, contemporary art and folk art. The gallery will be ready for the 2016 season, and we are very excited about this new feature. And lastly, I just want to mention that over the next couple of months, we are working on a five-year Exhibits and Programs Plan, and we welcome any input or suggestions from anyone, so please feel free to contact me at any time with your ideas.
Any questions for Laura regarding any of the projects in your town?
Thank you.
Thanks a lot. Anita Deming? I believe you all have a copy of the Cornell Cooperative Extension Report for November? Some handouts?
Our annual report, we need that.
Okay.
We do our reporting on the federal system, so that's why you got an annual report from October to September, actually. Okay? And pretty much, that's, we did have our annual meeting, and we made our Friends of Extension, we're John Sheldrake and Kimberly Barnum. And we don't make Friends of Extension while you're on the board, so you got to wait until you get off the board to get our basket. But other than that, that's...
Do you have any programs coming up? Let's see, Deep Wigs, Eric Green, or Red Dead?
Yeah, this is being a deep time, yeah.
Cornell Strategic Marketing Conference.
Well, that is outside of our area, but it is a statewide meeting that we promote for our people to go to.
All right. Any questions for Anita? Cornell Cooperative Extension? Thank you.
Thank you.
I need a resolution approving Cornell Cooperative Extension annual report moved by Jerry, seconded by Mr. Magu. Any comments of discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. So, okay, well, we have a real treat today. Jim McCann is here to do a PowerPoint of the selection ceremony to the Lake Pleasant Hall of Fame.
This is your call, I think I care about 68 minutes.
All short for the Saturday night, then.
Thank you very much. We're going to do this whole very quickly, March 2014, which we just got back last week. Our analysis in all my shop reading and a little bit, get your file, that's the, that's the essence of counting. All of this business that we do have to do is we have the annual resolutions designated Bruce as the important promotion agency for Essex County, and we have Jason Lawrence as our fourth promotion agent. Those resolutions allow us to apply for the I Love New York matching funds program, so we have to, hopefully we can get it done at the December meeting. And I probably have booked both blasters, but we broke the one that's designated Jason by, you have copies of it. And hopefully we can get that done at the December meeting. So it's waiting for us to come up. So let's see what else we have. Okay, so this was made in October 15th, our October 15th, so it's current, I haven't shown this anywhere yet. This, we do this on an annual basis for the last 12 years now. And what I'll explain it on this chart a little bit, we'll all get a little back, just give you. What we do is we contract with kick paste marketing out of Plattsburgh, and they bring in some tours and professionals. And what we do is give them our, what we call our trackable leads, and we'll see that last year, 2014, we generated 139,000 trackable leads. That means how many people, we got their emails, their names and addresses, people that we could track. Just looking, give you an idea of how many people visit our Essex County websites through this morning, year-to-date, we had 1,923,000 sessions on our Essex County sites, so that we're touching a good percentage of them. This chart, you know, what I'm just going to try to highlight the key ones. If we look at, you know, I'll put down there first here... sites, on our social media. And I don't know if we follow that, but we're coming up with pretty accurate, we have all the programs on our websites for each region that we have at Essex, and also our social media where we sort of give, you know, traffic packages away. And that generates a lot of interest, and that's why you can see that number growing. We look at, so, based partly of the 139,000 names, and what they did is they did a sample with 16,500 of those, sent out an electronic survey, generated 1,958 responses, which they felt quite comfortable with, this statistically, to be statistically good. And just to run down some of the general numbers, the average incoming respondents, that would actually be the mean average right there, was 101,000. The average party that came, stated average of 3.9 nights, average party size was four. Convergent factor, meaning of those survey people that touched our marketing material, 85% of that said that they did come to Essex County, pretty close to the five-year average. Daily expenditure per party per day, so that's the per party per day expenditure in 14, was $338, $338, a little lower than our five-year average. And, you know, there's probably some reason that, that going to that, or the gas prices starting to climb, that sort of thing. But from that, we take those numbers, we can, we can determine, well, we feel that these year expenditures, travel expenditures that touched our office was about 157 million. That doesn't mean that all of the tours in that town, that is the ones that need to touch, that touched our materials, and from there, we feel that that's probably, that translates into about 6.3 million in sales tax revenue. But that, and all the tours and other things that we do that are not current here, is our meeting and convention sales office, which also generates quite a bit of economic activity. And we, that next year, I just kind of reported this week, that we're gonna have a regular year of meeting and conventions through our, our, through Bruce, that we've got 24 different groups now, so that's, that's a good thing. So we ended up on occupancy tax in 14, we collected 1.9, more than we've collected, they got 5% of it, 1.9 million. We take that, we get a return on occupancy tax, which was 83.1, which is a very good number for us. If we look at our total budget, which is 2.2, what our total budget was, is our total budget, that we have sort of regional co-op budget, was 70.1. We look at our total revenues for Essex County, that we secured last year, the ROI had about 56.1. So that's what that says. This is basically a profile of where people are coming from, I don't know if it's hard to see, but certainly the biggest area is, is New York State, where we can see over here 60% of the folks coming from New York State, or, I'm sorry, 60% reported to come from New York State. We saw teens in western New York last year. We did see a little bit of decline in Canadian traffic, and we're seeing that continuing right now, as, as, you know, with the exchange in dollars, we had, we had, our, part of our team was up at the Toronto Ski Show a few weeks ago, and clearly the Canadians are saying that the exchange is affecting them. So we'll continue to see that. That's sort of breaking out, people come from, I average days, this is sort of a report one. Last year was 49, average days 51. You know, we all know that, you know, the largest generation now is certainly not the boomers. And the fact that we're staying consistent, makes our heads, boomers are aging, the numbers are staying there, but we're starting to see a little bit, at least last year, it showed a little bit of decline, also we've had 49 and 11. But, you know, that's what we have to start gearing ourselves more and more to, and that, the younger folks are so much more today inclined to do all of their research online, and really, traditional ways are a thing of the past right now, and traditional ways of reaching them are a thing of the past. And that's why we've been focusing all of our attention on the last couple of years, on really, really becoming much more of a digital or an online marketing organization, which is very labor-intensive, because we have people now, you know, that are constantly online, updating not only the content on our websites, but just, just as importantly, becoming more importantly, all the social networks that we work with. Now, the website development today is not something where you put a website up and then stack. We're adding content to all of our Essex County sites on, we're pretty much just about a daily, or at least the very minimum, a couple of times a week basis. And so when people do the searches, the organic searches with Google, we want our sites to rise to the top. We do that by content generation, and also it's very important that we don't duplicate information that's on other sites, because when it's duplicated, it cancels each other out. So we're working very diligently on that, but it's quite a labor-intensive, intensive movement. So, here's the mean, as I said, we mentioned that before, the mean household, they come, the median household is the average age, and then the median household, they come, the median they come is that, if you went halfway down, you'd say half the people would be above 100,000, the other half people would be below 100,000, on the median. Party size, so you can see this, the 2014 is higher, by the graphic, we're pretty close to that. That stays somewhat consistent, that the blue is average party size, and the sort of orange color is average night stay. Tiny here visited, though we saw, in 80, well, 81% of our visitors come between May, in last year, come between May and October. That's a little more weighted last year towards the warm months, usually the breakout is about 30% cold weather visits and 70% warm weather visits. Last 14, it worked out a little bit different. And that, you know, winter is our challenge for the most part, you know, really, that's where we have, that's where we've seen, well, put it this way, we've, we've seen percentage of increase in spring and fall, much greater than, than winter over the past few years. And we, our office is now concentrating more and more on that. We're gonna have a few tools that we're bringing to the table this coming year, where places like our Screw Lake region will be able to package the ski lift tickets with Gore quite easily. So we hope to get that initiated, really, late, late winter, probably, but it's important to recognize where our growth potential is. Tiny here visited, that's just a summary of that, you can just sort of see that, certainly July office, September, over busiest, followed by May-June. We sort of talked about this, so it just sort of reinforces it a little bit. You know, what's, where do they stay? This is a little hard to read, just when you guys change those black colors, but hotels still come out in the morning, I think this next chart shows it a little bit better. You see over, that's off the chart there, but, you know, hotels are 3%, hotels 12%, cabin, cabin passengers are 18%. Camping, RV, 10 to 15, I can read that one, private is 7%. But may I have a copy for Dan here to take? But, you know, the movement that the county is taking on the private rentals, it does represent a significant percent when you look at all those, all those. What is this one? The attractors, what attracts people to the area. Again, this is no surprise, and it stays pretty consistent, it's outdoor activity. But what's important here to understand, that's number one. But number two is relax, dining, and shopping, that's the resort atmosphere, and that's some of the challenges we have. Our biggest challenge in our county is positioning our communities that they have, that they have current lodging, then they have the supporting retail and restaurants to go along with it, because that's really what makes a destination. It's, it's, you know, it's, we can certainly get people to visit our outdoor activities, but if our communities aren't structured in a way with the amenities that the visitors are looking for, it's unlikely to keep them there or to get some expenditures out of them. So that's, that's a challenge that we continue to work on. So outdoor activities, continue to do well. Area to culture this year, I don't know if those are charted, it's on the next one here. I want to go, let's go back, because this is actually important, I think, for our area areas and culture. Last year saw a couple bumps up, but, you know, when you look at areas and culture and arts and entertainment, and combine those, it's got a pretty good spike there. I think that that's an area happy line that we can continue to grow and add more. Up interest here, certainly relax, dining, but we saw a little decline in our picnic venues last year. And again, that's why we have to, even though we see a gap one year, we have to keep the five-year average in, in, in mind. And this is just sort of a breakdown of the major areas of the outdoor activities. Hiking certainly always tops the charts, followed by meal, kayaking, and boating. Fishing is certainly up there, and we're so happy to participate in the fish action this coming year. Skiing, boating, jump out, but those are sort of the main activities that people identify what they do when they come to the area. And conversion rate, how we, how that's determined by this group is that, all the people interviewed, they said, and 85% of them said that they, they're touching our marketing materials, either reinforced or helped them, or really made them decide to come to the county. So that's how that conversion factor is taken into consideration. The breakdown of how people spend, 38% is spending lodging, 18% in meals, 70% in shopping, 7% in entertainment, 6% attractions.
What did that say?
Transportation, 10%. We did see a little decline there, again, the gas prices started to go down, and 10% up. And that's sort of a breakdown of the condition that I just gave you. You can see, well, you can see, these are per party, per day expenditures.
James, on that, what's the explanation for the lodging cost to come down so quickly?
You know, I'm not sure on that. It's, it certainly seems that some other reports for 14 show that what's called the average daily group rate for lodging continues to increase. Might be accommodation, I don't know. You can go back and look, it might have more hiking, or might be camping or RBS that year, I'm not sure about that. And so, but, you know, it's a little low on the average that we've had the last five years, but I'm not sure, I'd have to do a little more research on that one to give you probably a solid answer. So, 139,000 quantity required, 85% confirmed, 3.9 average, 8.9 night stay, over 460,000 people a week that come, bringing more come to the area. And that's sort of summary there. And there's the breakout of the ROI, although the ROI, just looking at occupancy tax is a little higher than we left it or higher than we left it. That's it. Our full report is available at bruceandjake.com, research. And we will email, everybody else will email a copy, so that everybody can have a link to that site. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions, gentlemen? Jim, I do, I do want to, without kidding, congratulate you on your recent honor on Saturday night.
Thank you very much.
Does anyone have any other, anything else to come before this?
We'll need you to pass a dual resolution designating Jason Lawrence.
I did, just at the end of this, that was effective, it was for June into January, but for the Isle of New York funding, you had mentioned, I do it every year. Is that a vote going to December, so it's effective in January?
I, I need a resolution designating Jason Lawrence as the Essex County Tourism Promotion Agent, effective, started on June 1, goes from June 1 of 2015 through 2016, correct?
I think it's gonna go January.
Oh, January, begins January. January, so effective January 1, 2016. Moved by Mr. Harrington, seconded by Mr. Moore. Any comments or discussion on that? All in favor? Okay. Anything else to come before? No. No, it's like, what's ahead? Okay. Well, that resolution is set in place on file, it leaves your travel study. Do I have a motion? Mr. Moore, seconded by Mr. Magu. Comments or discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Anything else to come before this? Your turn. Thank you.